We are back from a closed session. Mr. Picknick, can you report out, please?
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item number two, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495.7.6. The city designated representatives, city manager Todd Barton and administrative services director Carrie Mendoza. The employee organizations were the police management and managers professional technical as individuals. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Okay, this is the city council meeting. We'll start Tuesday, January 7, 2020. We'll be on a regular session. I will call this meeting to order at 6:03.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Bertamara.
Here.
Mayor Santos.
Here. Okay. Actually, on request for any excuse options, obviously, we're all here. Right, the clerk? Okay. We'll do the, you know, place of legion. Would you kindly, please, Sean?
Absolutely. Please, your right to go. Anybody can have a seat. A place of legion is for all, and the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great Jesus Christ.
Okay. On the agenda, any adjustment to agenda?
None.
Okay. Any conflict of interest disclosure? None? Okay. So we move on on the announcement, recognitions, proclamations, and correspondence. There'll be a, you know, presentation on point in time homeless by the County of Riverside on this. There'll be Department of Public Social Services, the fifth district supervisor Joseph Jeff Hewitt. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, mayor, and council members and city staff and people in the audience. I'm Kimberly Trump with the Department of Public Social Services. Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Mario with Supervisor Hewitt's office got called away suddenly. He was very disappointed because he had some really cool map to show you, but we'll make sure you get it by email. I'm here just briefly to talk about the point in time count that's coming up at the end of January. As I'm sure most of you, if not all, know, it's a federally required count that we do each year of the homeless population. The main count will be happening this year on January 29th from 5:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. And then we will be doing some special focus to count the homeless youth over three days. The 29th through the 21st are the 31st in the afternoons so that... And we're also focusing on seniors because what we're seeing right now is probably a big undercount in Riverside County. So a couple things real quick. I think you have PowerPoint in front of you. So these are the numbers from last year for District 5. They actually showed a decrease that should be 2018 to 2019. And we really believe that that's the result of an undercount countywide. That's why we're really looking for widespread participation. The city managers of each city are sort of acting as liaisons and kind of branching out there. But the Department of Public Social Services, and I know without a doubt Supervisor Hewitt, he and his staff are very, very focused on this. They really would like to see a good count for the fifth district. So you have a breakdown. Last year, there were 2,811 sheltered and unsheltered homeless adults and children countywide. This year, we're going to do a couple different things. One of the most significant changes we've made in the county is we're going to be counting people who are living in their cars. There will be a soft count, as I think you all know. Law enforcement and community leasing plays a really big role in our ability to be successful at this. They do a lot of work ahead of time to do soft count and preparation. So I always like to give a big shout out to our code enforcement, law enforcement. Another thing we're going to be doing this year that's different is we're working with REMSA, the Riverside County Emergency Management Joint Powers, which is basically all of the emergency departments, first responders, paramedics, all of those folks. And we're going to be working with them to communicate through the county by ready net system. So we'll be directly communicating into the EDs during the time of the count to the paramedics who are in the field who are possibly caring for homeless individuals so that we can get their assistance in counting as well. I think the challenges of homelessness are known to many of us. I think they're complex. There's probably not one single thing usually that drives a whole individual or family into homelessness. But as you know, public health is at risk when we have a lot of people living on the streets, not just for those individuals, but on a broader sense, just the basic infrastructure of our communities are not really meant to handle that. Also, mental health, substance abuse, deep poverty, these are things that... And I do want to talk about domestic violence because we're seeing more and more women on the streets, and virtually all of them, there's domestic violence has played a role. So getting a good count is important. We want to capture those people, and participation is really critical. We also are working with UCR, their data department. Actually, we just got a big award, Riverside County did, because using UCR, this in the 2019 count, we were really able to launch technology for the first time. We're doing way better this year. We expect to have numbers sooner. We expect that technology to really help us just get better data. So for example, when you go to apply for a grant and you want to know what the statistics are in the city of Beaumont, you can look at that data, and it should be richer year over years, we get better at it. So volunteer registration, the registration to volunteer ends January 20th. That's something new that we're pleased to let people really just volunteer up till the last minute. But we really want to be more tactical about the way we deploy people this year. So we're closing off the volunteer registration. If you want someone to come out and train you, if you all want to come and count, you want to learn how to use the mobile phone app, we can send somebody out to do a training session for you. Anyone who wants to, if you want to get a little group together, you can notify me through Nicole, and we're happy to help. And with that, I left some flyers. There's a QR code. You can actually just use your phone to register the youth count and the adult count. Have two different registration codes because the questions are different. If you participated last year, you still need to register this year because every year we're, I believe we're improving our survey, our questions, and getting more feedback from LGBTQ youth and others to help us maybe even be more sensitive in our questioning. And I'm not a super big expert on homeless. I'm pretty new to this role and this job, but I'm happy to take your questions and get you answers if I don't know them. Are there any questions? I thank you, and I encourage everybody to take a flyer and considering volunteering for one of the dates of the count. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Move on? Move on on this public comment period. We will go on the regular. Any one person may address the city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. This is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. The state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action brought by your comments. No questions on that? Let's go on the, you know, consent calendar. Sorry, I didn't see you there. I mean, uh...
No, we have public comments.
We have public comments?
Yeah, we have.
Very good. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Terry Worthy.
Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Terry Worthy, and I am a resident in Beaumont. And I'm here tonight because the city council is continuing to neglect the emergency needs of our residents. Without a fire station located within a required time limit, most California insurance companies will not renew, they will not issue new, and they will not cancel, they will cancel current policies. When that happens, people can lose their homes, either they can't afford their policy any longer, or they don't even get a policy any longer. So without that, they don't meet the requirements of their mortgage companies either. The minute they get a non-notice of renewal, the mortgage company gets notice, and pretty soon they start wanting to call in the note. This is happening. This is happening a lot. Some people are living in their homes right now. If they paid for them, they have no policy. They cannot even sell their home if they want to, because you can't close escrow on a house that you don't have a fire certificate on. If you don't have insurance, you can go in escrow, but they're not going to close until you have that policy. When we bought our home, we were one tenth of a mile inside being able to get it. And they even told us real, real action within feet. But we didn't get the insurance company that we had for many, many years because they wouldn't write it. We had to go to another company. And from what I'm seeing on Facebook where people are writing, they're asking, who do you have it with? Does somebody have it? I just got my letter. These people are not the panic, because they're going to... One homeless, you're going to have more homeless. Can you imagine the people up in the elderly, neighborhoods of 55 and over, they're getting these notices? They panic if it's junk mail, they panic. And they're panicking because they can't buy insurance. They're like, I don't know where they're going to go. The Fox Business yesterday published that the California real estate market takes a hit as fire insurance costs grow. If you think that a homeowner can just go to the state to get the policy when nobody will write it, there's no way that anybody can afford to pay upwards to $24,000 per year just for fire insurance. That's when you go to the state, running between $22,000 and $24,000 a year. I don't know about you guys, but I didn't go like that. I can't pay that. That's just for a year. The council must immediately resolve the situation. You have the money for it, and God knows that most Beaumont residents are paying more than any other city in California. Yet we do not even have the basic needs for fire protection for our families. We have some major fires going on in the world, but we had them right in our own neighborhood. I collected toys, I collected clothing, because some people did lose their homes, and some people lost their lives. They couldn't get saved. They couldn't get there in time. I mean, how are you going to feel if another person dies because the fire engine didn't get there in time to save them? How will you feel when you see home after home, going back to the banks, families fleeing their homes because you didn't act? Remember when people couldn't afford the interest rates? And every other house had a for sale sign across the country? That's what you're going to see, but you're going to see it in Beaumont. Okay? You're going to see it, because we can't sell our houses in this situation. We can't afford our homes.
Make it leave this charter, Carrie. Don't know right now. Thank you, Mom. Next is Bob Worthy.
Hello. I'm Bob Worthy.
Hi, Bob.
I live in Beaumont. I'm here tonight because the city of Beaumont seems to not want to build another fire station. They, I'm told that you have the land, don't know if you have the plans that are complete, have you put it out to bid? We don't know any of these things. We know we don't have a fire station. And like my wife just said, we got fire insurance, but not from the same company, and then we got a renewal. It was about 50% increase in the premium. So, I mean, Joey Taylor says she hadn't been able to get fire insurance, and it was turned down by 10 companies. Never had a claim. She thought the fire station was golden in 2021. I assume La Brosse said it had been that way for years. The council doesn't want to act. There were 38 comments on the local Facebook that were, you know, negative because they're all frustrated that we don't have a fire station. I mean, this city's growing. You've got the Pardee stuff, you've got Hollywood, you've got all these developments going on, but you haven't built a fire station. The general consensus is that you're not very good at managing money. So you need to get the fire station built, and you need to staff it. So I'm not sure exactly, you know, what you guys got to do. I understand that there was a bond money that was for that, but it was used for other purposes. So, you know, reallocate the money, build a fire station. You say it's a priority, but it's not a priority if you don't have it. Put out the bid, a start date, when are you going to break ground? Any of that stuff? If you don't have any of that, it's not a priority. It's just an idea, something you're thinking about. So maybe we can put that on the agenda for next, the next meeting, and we can discuss it so you guys can take some action. It would be nice if you guys would act on what we've been paying our taxes for. So you can't just continue to say it's a priority without a start date, you know, certified plans, put it out to bid, get three bids, and pick the bid that is best for the city. And then, there you are.
Thank you, Bob. Do you want to respond?
Yeah, I was going to ask, there seems to be missing a question in the community.
Yeah, I mean, we'll give you a response on that. Are there any other citizens that are here to speak on that issue, maybe? Is there anybody else?
We do have one more speaker.
One more? Why don't we finish that first?
Okay. Nancy Hall.
So I was here last year over the same issue, and I'm going to go on word again. So we have traffic issues at First and Beaumont Avenue, at Pennsylvania and First Street, at First and California. And what it is, is that, first off, we don't have a left-hand turn signal going east-west on First Street at Beaumont Avenue. We have it going, I'm assuming it's north and south is that way to me, but going towards the freeway and towards Hemet, we have left-hand turn signals in each of those lanes. We have backup from traffic coming from Hemet trying to access the overpass and getting onto the freeway. And without the turn signals, you end up sitting in the middle of the intersection because you can't go anywhere after you've gone behind the person in front of you, you're stuck. And I believe that we, you know, you manage to put lights, a stoplight is not light yet at Fourth and Bailey. But this is an area that we get way more traffic right now, and it's important. I think they need to all be relooked at and decide on the timing of them. We have people coming off the freeway at Pennsylvania going to Hemet, so they come down First Street and make a left onto 79 to go down south to Hemet. And so as the area is growing and we're adding more commercial at Second Street Marketplace, and people coming up from Hemet, and Beaumont's growing, those lights need to be reevaluated, and we need to improve our left turn signal so we can monitor the amount of cars that it can handle per that light before the road stacks up into the next area. We've had a couple of really bad accidents there where people died, and I just don't think that we can ignore it. Last thing, I see my light here, last thing, on the Centennial Bridge. While that is completed, and I saw the plaque there tonight, when I went by to look at it again, and I see you cleaning up the cement slurry, which I appreciated, there's still the stains on it from the paint, or maybe it's from the weather, but it's real tacky looking. And that the curb, you know, has all this red, you know, on it, and I think that there might be able to see if there's someone that can come out and clean it up so it looks nice. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
No more public comments.
Very good, Steve. Thank you. Would you like to address that thing?
I would if I could. And it has been a council party to address public safety, in particular, fire protection. In the last two years, the city council has approved an increase to the contract with Cal Fire to add an additional crew to the department. It's the first phase in actually having a fully-staffed engine company in anticipation of opening the West Side Fire Station, which is what we're calling the Fire Station that would be built on the property over off Pachero. We're actually in design right now for a final design and to prepare bid documents to construct a new fire station on the west side. We've been working with Cal Fire the last several months to finalize, and we actually presented to council a couple of months ago a conceptual plan for that West Side Fire Station, which the council approved and authorized, and allowed us to begin the process of selecting an architect, which we then did about a month or two later. So we anticipate really having the construction documents ready into us by late spring or early summer this summer. And once those are in, then we'll be out to bid to get that construction commencing. We have it scheduled for the start of construction, the fiscal year '21 timeframe. We have what we call a capital improvement plan, which looks at building needs, roads, things like that. And so that is scheduled as part of our project. We've got the money to be able to build the station, so the money is there. Again, we're ready to ramp up, so when that station opens, it'll open with a full engine company, and we're prepared and ready for that. So it's in our fiscal plan, it's in our staffing plan, and the station itself is in our construction plan. Since we added that, what we call a paramedic squad, that new crew, the last couple of years, we've actually seen an improvement in response times. So even though we've seen continual elevation in terms of calls for service, the actual response times have been going down. So we have addressed and been increasing that. Those calls for service and the staffing levels, you're correct, does not address the ISO ratings and the fire ratings that people need to see out in that area. And until we get the station built, that's what's going to have to happen to address the various issues that are there. But councils discussed that issue in great detail, and they've been taking aggressive plans to get the facilities out there to address that issue. We got the land secured about a year ago, so we've gone from land to site design to site concept plan to now engage in actual design within about a 12-month period. So it's been moving about as aggressively as we can under the current leadership that we have. So I know that's not necessarily all the answers that you want. I know it didn't help your issue today, but we're moving as aggressively as we can to try to get moving and get that facility out there for you guys. But we are there. We've, one other thing I think that we need to put to bed is the issue about bonds being issued to construct a station is not true. Bonds were never issued to construct that facility. We're not doing it with debt. We'll be doing it with cash that we have on hand to actually go out there and get the station built. So that's really kind of a quick update on that particular issue.
Very good. Can I interject on the, on the insurance? I mean, probably I could check also the California fire plan. They have a very, very reasonable, and they know what's going on in Beaumont, so you could check that on the, on the state. I mean, that information. Yeah. So they're very reasonable on that. I'm a mortgage broker, so, so no advertising or something. So, okay, let's move on. Okay, let's see, you know, that side, consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolution to be read by title only. So we will go on consent calendar on item number three to item number nine. Is there any item that I need to pull out, council? So I need a motion on this?
May I make a motion to approve items three through nine under the consent calendar?
I'll second that.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Bertamara.
Yes.
Mayor Santos.
Yes. Let's move on on the action item of public hearings. We don't have our public hearings today, tonight. So we will go on the action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. Item number 10, approve implementation of national community survey via hard copy surveys with the following add-on options. Option number one is the largest, simple size reminder of postcard, Spanish translation, custom benchmark comparisons, open-ended question, and in-person presentation. And the staff report will be, you know, Ms. Ashley Storey. Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor Council. As we continue to hold budget workshops to determine the direction and future of our city, comparative tabular and understanding of resident perspective and expectations. The National Community Survey uses scientific survey methods to provide a comprehensive and accurate picture of livability and resident perspectives across a variety of facets in three pillars of the community, including characteristics, governance, and participation. Driving from resident, a tiny database of over 30 million Americans, the NCS has results with pinch marks compiled from surveys conducted across the United States. With a four-month, four-month average timeline commencing a survey in January, we'll yield two priorities for strategic planning by June. The National Community Survey has three survey options, which staff is recommending the hard copy surveys for time being. This option does have the ability to have an online survey for official resident feedback. There are some following add-on options, which the mayor has already addressed. And staff recommends not to exceed budget of $30,000 for the 2020 survey. There is a 10% discount given to ICMA members, of which Beaumont is a member. And the National Research Center has extended an offer to Beaumont to 2019 pricing if we were to enter into a scheduled subscription contract. The contract is able to be canceled at any time with a certain fund issue, and we do recommend having a survey on a recurring basis every three to five years. So if we were to enter into that, the contract will have the 2020 pricing for this year as well as in the subsequent survey. Some California cities that have completed surveys in recent years are Riverside, Tustin, Sacramento, San Jose, Palo Alto, just to name a few. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment on this? No? Discussions, council?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Got questions?
I had a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
So basically, so as a person with a science background, I understand the need for data-driven decisions. I've got two concerns. The first concern forces price for what we're getting, and the second concerns the time. So, you know, we're looking at a census that's going to be taking place, looking around the same timeline this might be coming out. And my first concern was dealing with the, perhaps, American Community Survey that the census does, corresponding with our survey. And I'm looking for whether that could be an overkill for the community, or maybe a burden, or turn some of the responses off when you're having two big surveys being conducted at the same time. So that was one concern. And the second had to do with the price. So if you can kind of expand, I noticed that it's a $30,000 expenditure up to not to exceed. And then when I look at the households, we're looking at 1,800. And I understand about sample size for statistics, I understand all that, but I'm just looking at cost effectiveness. So can you comment perhaps on those two?
Sure. So the pricing, the base price for the 1,700 surveys that would be initially mailed out is a little... is a little over 15,000. So that's your base price. With the first survey you want to send out, it's in staff's opinion that you should kind of, you should expand and get the best data you can. So that's why we recommended the following add-on options. Those are, they're completely up to you. We do recommend increasing the sample size up to 2,500 so you get a better sample of the residents. They all...
So are you saying that for the, not to exceed 30, that would give us 2,500?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, continue.
So, of the options recommended, it comes in a little over 27,000, so you have a little wiggle room if you wanted to include possibly a second open-ended question. If you wanted to eliminate some of these options, that's also possible.
Okay. And then, any comment on the double census that could be going on, a double survey? Do you think that could be a factor or am I just stating maybe?
I don't necessarily think it would be a factor. I mean, we would highly advertise our survey, make sure all the residents are aware of it. You're gonna have the sample size, but it's also gonna be available through the entire city over the web. So, I don't anticipate it being confused with the census survey. I don't think it'd be an issue.
And one thing to note too, this is a mailer, so you'll actually be receiving a hard copy of it. And the reason why you do mailer in this day and age is with the lack of phone, you know, hard landlines, things like that, cell phones. Experience has shown that doing the mailer are the best way to get a return. And so with that, you're talking a 40 to 50% return rate typically. So they would keep sampling until they get the sample size that's there. So it's not like the US Census where you try to reach and then you may move on. This is where you keep working until you can get that sample completed to make sure you've got the full complement of responses that you need to get your statistical validity.
And, go ahead. And I think I read as I looked over it, we have the ability to tailor some of the questions as well, specific to the community needs?
Yes, so you have the ability to have three to four custom questions, but still resulting in quantitative results. As well as, one of the recommendations was to include an open-ended question, which the responses will be in a separate report, verbatim responses from all the residents.
Okay, all right, I'm good for now.
Very good. Go ahead Nancy. Actually, the open-ended question is of great interest to me. Have you seen any example of what type of open-ended question or would we have great liberty to design what the open-ended question would be?
It would be completely up to us what our question would be.
Okay.
So, the center would help us tailor our custom questions to make sure that they're unbiased and then the open-ended question also help craft it in the same manner.
Because with the open-ended question, I think it's a great idea. I think the open-ended question is, if there's any add-on that I think is very valuable. I think it's the ability to allow the people to talk back to us in a way that they feel is important to them versus just filling out the survey, which is very good. I'm all about collecting the data, so I think that's good. But, you know, the wording of that is gonna be really, really important to make sure that we encourage as much of appropriate response and I mean appropriate in the sense of making sure that it's useful when it gets back to us on what that is. So, I think it's a great idea to put it in. I think it adds tremendous value to it, especially with such a high return rate. I don't know if language becomes an issue with that. You know, if English, if that open-ended question is in English and that's not the primary language, I have a little bit of concern over that part of it, but...
So we do have on the add-on options is a Spanish translation. So all the hard mailers will be sent in English and in Spanish. Spanish-speaking residents will be directed to the online survey. So those responses will be included in the scientific results, whereas general web responses are in a separate report. But individuals that were mailed the actual survey and choose to complete it in Spanish online will be included in the scientific results.
I think it's a great idea overall, I really do, but I do wanna emphasize that the open-ended, I think, is critical to adding quality to it.
I agree.
Thank you.
Very good. Mike?
Do we get the control of the number of questions? Cause sometimes surveys, if you ask too many questions, people can just, well, I tend to tune out.
It's approximately 80 questions.
How many?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Some are very easy, demographic information, male, female, things like that.
Wow. So, the questionnaires that they'll, they're gonna keep sending mailers out until they get the number of questionnaire responses, will they be looking, and I know they're checking a geographic area, but will they be looking to get a certain number of responses from each geographic area?
This is intended to be a true random sample. Now, if there are some key areas or key populations that you're concerned about, we can talk about that and they can try to focus a little bit in some of those areas.
Okay.
We can talk about that in terms of the construction of the survey instrument itself and the process.
Okay. And do we have any prior communities that have gone through this, any comments from them or have reached out to other communities to see if they've been happy with the results or the, because 80 questions just seems like, to me it seems like a lot, but...
Well, I will say, I have personal experience using this particular program, NCS, in Curva. We finished it up and it was a good comprehensive survey. We got our numbers and we got the response that we needed and I think NCS is good in helping us develop some messaging to get out in front of the community and I think, you know, when you really begin to look at the construct and the types of questions that's there, it's really getting to heart what we need to know.
Right.
You know, for the community and it's very broad-based and, you know, they're terming this the Community Livability Survey, so what we're truly trying to understand is what our citizens feel or think that they like and don't like about the community, things that they think we need to do more of and so it, but in my experience and talking to the communities that have done these, you know, it's a good product and there is participation. It's kinda surprising you can actually get some good results from this, but...
Okay. Yeah, no, this, I think this is a great idea. So, and it sounds like we do have the control to kind of, to somewhat control the way that we put the question around, questions that we're asking.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. On my side, this is really, you know, I'm really, really excited about this. We should've done this way back then. So now we're getting to that stage right now that we could, you know, the only thing I have, I really, you know, concerned on this is how are we gonna, you know, do the, sending the, you know, the mailing and everything on the household, on this? I mean, do we have a category on that or level of, you know, people that we will send it, I mean, on this, on this survey?
So the NCS purchases addresses from the United States Postal Service quarterly, so they have an updated list of addresses that they'll send to. They're gonna ask as far as zip code as well as the GIS coordinates of our city to make sure that we're not sending surveys to Cherry Valley since we showed some zip code of them. So we will control the area of which is sent.
Yeah, because the household we have right now is a 17,000 household in our record, so we're doing only 10% of that and then putting up on 2,500 on that, on that side. So that's, that's why I'm just curious what kind of, you know, household that we're gonna reach on this. I don't want that to, because there's a lot of communities in our area that have different categories on their lifestyle, on this, or exposure with the city. That's the only concern I have.
Well, again, you know, they're using scientifically, statistically significant processes to implement the survey itself and so, so you would be getting a valid survey. I think one of the other important add-ons that the Star is recommending is the online general survey result. And so, those are interesting because then you can kinda get a flavor for, you know, kinda what the general public or maybe what may be out there and can kinda help gauge that against what the other survey result looks like. And again, you'll see those in two separate, very distinct reports in terms of how that information came in, what those tell you, what they say. But that way you can get multiple households that can respond, you've got all sorts of other things that can go, but this would be a truly random sample element where we're looking to ensure that the home or the site selections that are occurring are being dispersed throughout the community, unless there's particular areas, like I said, that you wanna kinda focus on a little bit more.
Okay. Very good. Yes?
I know, I said I wouldn't ask that question.
No, go ahead. Let me ask you.
I just wanna verify there's no software licensing in this, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
We did, well, we'll say, in terms of the dollars, cause it's hard to say, Councilman Martinez asked about the dollars and, you know, other communities I've been in, we've conducted surveys, we've spent, and this, I'm talking now, I'm dating myself, like 20 years ago, we did surveys, we're spending anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000 dollars. University of North Texas has an MPA program that does a lot of community surveys, especially around the North Texas area and they are typically ranging 35,000 to 50,000. This program is able to deliver some high-quality, kinda more rich program efforts or bells and whistles into the program because they're doing it nationwide and they're doing it through, this is an ICMA affiliation that they're doing this through, so it's not biased, there's not a for-profit motive behind this. The other element to NCS is cities that participate get put into a national database and it's a searchable database for us and as you saw in the scope of work here. It allows us to be able to see how do we benchmark against cities in our area? How do we benchmark against cities of our similar size in California and across the country? So, you know, with several thousand cities in that database now, you know, we'd be part of that and you can kind of gauge your progress against, you know, kinda how other communities are looking and what other areas of the country are looking like, so. That's another element of value to this that you won't necessarily have with other survey programs that are out there where they're doing just USA unique project.
Very good.
One thing, so, and I researched and I saw the benchmark and the tried and true comments they made and, and again, it's very worthwhile because it does compare us and we can see some of those questions when they come in, whether, how they rank nationally and so forth. So just put my ease in line with the money, so we have it where in the budget and, are we good?
Yeah, we'll be coming to you with a budget amendment that will address that. We've got some salary savings and some other dollars throughout the budget that we would propose to repurpose for this. Right now we have some additional contingency dollars in the budget that I could use right now without a budget amendment to cover that.
Very good. Anything else?
Mayor, I'm...
Okay.
Motion? ...of National Community Survey via hard copy surveys with the following add-on options, harder sample size, reminder postcard, Spanish translation, custom benchmark comparisons, open-ended question and an in-person presentation with a budget not to exceed 30,000.
Paul Second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cal?
Yes.
Mayor Bertamora?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Thank you.
It'll take a while.
Thank you, Ashley.
That was a mistake.
Okay, let's move on. Item number 11. Updates of the annual slurry seal project CIP 2019-001. Alleyway rehabilitation project CIP 2018-003. Beaumont Avenue rehabilitation project CIP 2018-004 and CIP 2019-002. Beaumont Avenue signalization study CIP 2019-017 and city crack ceiling operation. Is there any...
No public comment.
I'll be commenting on this? Okay. Okay, stop, you know, our report will be Mr. Hart, please.
Good evening, Mayor Santos and City Council.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, so the item before you is a brief update for the annual slurry seal project, alleyway rehabilitation, Beaumont Avenue rehabilitation project, the Beaumont Avenue signalization project and the city crack ceiling operation. So first we'll talk about the annual slurry seal project. This project applies to approximately seven miles of local collector and arterial streets throughout the city and shown in Attachment A of your staff report. The funding source for these improvements comes from a combination of Measure A and SP1 revenues. The project plans for this have been approved and will be advertised for construction this week. The alleyway rehabilitation project, this is a removal replacement of about 500 linear feet or 9,000 square feet of existing deteriorated asphalt paving behind the post office essentially between Ninth and Tenth Street. The funding for this project is provided by the now de-funkality and diff funds, which has a balance of about 30,000 dollars. These project plans will be approved this week and bid along with the slurry seal and the rehabilitation project. The Beaumont Avenue rehabilitation project, this will remove and replace approximately 40,000 square feet of existing asphalt between Fifth and Sixth and Eighth and Eleventh with five inches of asphalt, over seven and a half inches of base material. This project will also grind and overlay approximately 525,000 square feet of asphalt and replace with three inches of new asphalt between Sixth and Eighth and Eleventh and Oak Valley. Now those limits could change depending on where the bids come in. If we get bids that are somewhat favorable, we, when we have available funding, we have plans designed to go further, we can go beyond, we have plans designed approved all the way to Brookside, so we will add additional bid items and incorporate those as funding allows for. The funding source for these improvements also come from Measure A and SP1 revenues and these plans will also be bid for construction this week. Beaumont Avenue signalization study, so along with the contract we issued to MBI for the design of the slurry seal project, alleyway rehabilitation and the Beaumont Avenue rehabilitation, we also engaged them for a traffic study along Beaumont Avenue to assess the need for signalization of any of the intersections between Sixth and Oak Valley, maybe any of the stop-controlled intersections to see if they should be signaled. The analysis came back that there was not, none of those intersections met a warrant criteria to be signaled at this time. They could potentially in future years, but at this time they do not. So upon further analysis, we're having them take a little bit deeper dive to see if any of the four-way stop-controlled intersections can be converted to two-way stop-controlled intersections. That analysis underway and expected to be complete by next month. The last project we have on here is the city crack ceiling operation. So in May of last year, council authorized the purchase of a crack seal machine. Since that time, city staff has performed crack ceiling on 16,000 linear feet, a little over three miles of existing AC paving and we are projecting an additional 60,000 linear feet on nearly 12 miles of crack ceiling by the end of this fiscal year. And with that, it's recommended that the city council receive and file the updates for the previously discussed projects. I'm available for any questions you may have.
No public comments on this? Discussion, council? Any questions? Do you, any comment? Go ahead.
So, so my comment of frustration really starts around the Beaumont signalization study. So, you know, for the study to come out and say that the traffic doesn't warrant that, you know, we as council have to listen to the frustration of the community when you're sitting at a signal and you're waiting, and I'm referring to the Beaumont and Sixth Street. You know, it's absolutely ludicrous to be waiting there left or right on a plane and here we have a study that says it's not warranted. So, I remember the chief once telling us why a city couldn't really do things that a study doesn't warrant, legality and so forth. So I wanted to know if you could comment to the public why the city can't really go out and put something where they think it should be if the study says it doesn't warrant it where the public might think that it does or insists that they're wanting to be there and so forth. And again, I'm referring to the Beaumont and Sixth, but this whole, you know, show the frustration of Beaumont first and so forth.
Yeah, so for Beaumont and Sixth Street, for sure, there are several criterias that go into warrant analysis and so, you know, one of the things that we look at from an impact perspective is the level of service, which is currently the criteria from an environmental perspective as well and that's essentially is, there's certain delays associated with letter grades and so you'd have a delay of, you know, zero to 15 seconds for letter A and then they deteriorate from there B, C, D, E and F. So deduction of level of service could frequently warrant some sort of mitigation measure and many times that mitigation measure would be the implementation of a signal to minimize that. But there are other things too, you know, safety comes into play... But there are other things too, you know, safety comes into play, proximity to schools, and so some of the things are maybe subjective terms that are not, is cut and dry, which leaves some ability to add those signalizations, those projects. But those things all come into account when they do these analyses and they make the determination as to whether or not the signal is warranted. But based on the volumes that we see, there are delays, and I, and I know at peak times that there are delays that are seen, but that they, they were not deemed significant enough to warrant the implementation of additional signalization at Sixth Street.
And there's no way that a council can override that or implement something?
I think we could certainly, you know, we could certainly explore, you know, other criteria to see if that's preferred. As far as a decision, you know, we would want to have some sort of backup to be able to substantiate that.
Of course, and in the comment that Ms. Hall made on the First and Beaumont Avenue, I didn't see that as.
So, no, that was not, and that's something that we've been trying to work with, that is a Caltrans-controlled intersection, and we've been trying to work with them previously. So we've recently reached out to them again to have them take a look at this as well to see if we can lean on them, because it is becoming definitely more and more impacted, you know, clearly more than even Sixth Street.
And that's because it's part of the state?
Yes, yes, so they, that is a Caltrans-controlled intersection.
All right, and I just wanted that to be looked at.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anyway, go ahead.
So, I talked about this when we did the study for, the traffic study for the new expansion of the Second Street Commercial Center, and we talked about the level of service, which I think before anything happens, they based it on a, and I want to say, level of service D. And my request back then is going to be the same today, is can't we change that level of service rather than waiting for a D level of service, say, you know what, our, our bottom line is a C level of service? Because, and I'm not a traffic engineer by any stretch, so, but it just seems like by the time we hit that level of service that requires either a stoplight or re-striping, the problem is, is too bad. I mean, it's terrible right now, but we haven't hit the level of service based on the traffic study that we had, so is there a way for us to, rather than making the standard a D level of service, say, we want the standard in the city Beaumont to be a C level service in the hopes that we get out ahead of the traffic, where we address traffic issues from a problem?
Yeah, so I think we certainly could, I mean, I think there's a couple of things here. One, if you're talking about the city standard, I mean, that's in the general plan, so I think in order to modify what our criteria is as far as where we're making those thresholds is that we have to modify the general plan requirements, and that's defined in there. You know, Second Street is a good example, and we are monitoring, you know, how well that, that works, you know, as having the first protected permissive signal in the city, and there are some other intersections that we'll be looking at, you know, potentially implementing as well, and certainly we can, you know, look at Sixth and Beaumont as part of it.
Thank you.
I have a level of service question that relates to the grading also. When we figured that out, is it a factor how much the intersection is used? Is that also put into the equation? Because we could have an intersection that was graded badly, let's say a D level or worse, and it might not be used as much as the area by First Street that we've already talked about some concern on, where there might be a higher volume of traffic that's going through it. So when we look at level of service, is the amount of traffic a factor? Because that, to me, would be an important piece of data, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a factor in the fact that it, you know, contributes to obviously what delay you're seeing, but it's merely a factor of the delay of an intersection, the average delay that we're incurring in an intersection, and specifically the delay that we're incurring in the peak hour, which is defined as between six and eight in the morning and four and six in the evening, and so it's the busiest hour within those windows.
Do we ever, or is it a consideration that gets added to it when there's a high accident count that's related to it?
Yeah, certainly, so we will look at those things when we look at intersections too, and we will work with PD to see if they can pull an accident incident or even, you know, how big enforcement is an issue as well, so those things all come into play as well. You know, we did also, and that's one of the things we pushed is to get the, the counts on the ground done so that we did it while school was in session, because we wanted to ensure that that was a contributing factor as well, and it wasn't done over the summer break, but it maybe would not show some of the real impacts we're seeing.
Thank you.
Yeah, for my side is the, you know, the evaluation of our conversion from four-way stop in Beaumont and Beaumont Avenue to Ninth Street to Tenth Street. And, you know, that would be reduced to, you know, a two-stop way, two-way stop in there. Today, you, you guys are considering the, you know, the traffic we have in there on the post office, that's the reason that we don't have any, you know, probably accidents in there for now. If you do remove that stop signs on Ninth Street and Tenth Street, there'll be, there'll be a mess in there.
Right, so it's, one of the reasons that we haven't wrapped up this study is it's a little bit of additional effort, but we also, they didn't have enough data to be able to complete it, and that's some of the data that we were looking to provide, is the incident history for those intersections, so they weren't necessarily comfortable making recommendations without that data, and to be honest, we weren't either.
Uh-huh.
So we want to be able to compile that data and ensure that they utilize that in their analysis.
Yeah, I hope they will not reduce that.
Right.
Because I, I go there almost every day, twice a day on that section. Okay, so, any motion to?
Mayor, I move to receive and file updates for the annual slurry seal project, alleyway rehabilitation project, Beaumont Avenue rehabilitation project, Beaumont Avenue signalization study, and the city crack ceiling operation.
I'll second. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Bertamlaure?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Let's move on to item number 12. Approve the purchase of one F-150 Super Crew work truck and one F-350 Super Crew utility truck in the amount of $74,760.75 from Fritz Ford. Mr. Stockton Van Beal, is that correct, or Van Beal?
Lindahl. Yes, correct. Thank you. Thank you, council. Yes, before you, tonight is a request for approval of the purchase of a couple of work trucks for the wastewater treatment plant. These were previously placed in this year's budget consideration. Three bids were received, they're all summarized below, and we are requesting approval for the requisition through the low bidder. Available for any questions?
Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, let's move on. Discussions? Motion?
Mayor, I move to approve staff to purchase one F-150 Super Crew work trucks, one F-350 Super Crew utility bed truck in the amount of $74,760.75 from Fritz Ford.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Bertamlaure?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Item number 13. Thank you, thanks. Item number 13, first quarterly fire protection services to Riverside County in the amount of $952,444.77, making them short. Stockwell report, Mr. Jeffrey Mullen, correct? Close?
That's perfect, perfect. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is a real quick presentation before you is a request for the first quarterly payment as you, we have four quarters, so you'll see three more of these come through, and this one is for $952,444.77, excuse me, I'm still getting over a cold here. So the budget for this is approximately $4.4 million, so this first quarterly installation, this first quarterly installation. I'm going to slide over. You and I got to get over there. I'm feeling quite a bit better, it's just my voice. So the first quarterly installation represents savings, you're going to be under budget here. It would be about $1.1 million if you were on budget, so you're a little bit under budget right now. The main reason for that is for vacancy savings. There will also be, there's administrative charge included here to the county of $195,000. I understand from historical perspective that while we're being charged the whole $195,000 now, that's, that's one of the, one full quarters, that we will get some rebate back on that essentially, they'll, at the fourth quarter, they'll give us some of that administrative charge back, so your amount of, your amount of $952 will actually be reconciled down a little bit in the fourth quarter. So you're, you got a little savings in the budget, and I would recommend approval of the invoice.
Public comment?
No public comment.
Discussion? Motion?
I just have a, a question.
Okay.
Quarterly service delivery passes is based on a cooperative agreement. Are any options to that? Trying to save us $195,000 by dealing directly, or is that?
Well, Chief Hopkins has actually been very good in working with us to try to secure direct acquisition of things as we can for such as things like vehicle maintenance, building repairs, things like that. So where we can and where we find opportunities for savings, they work very closely with us to secure what we can.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve payment of first quarter fire protection services to the county in the amount of $952,444.77.
Second. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Bertamlaure?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Okay, item number four. City Council, 14. City Council, approve of change order number 12 for wastewater treatment plant upgrade expansion in the amount not to exceed $91,417.26. And stock report, Ms. Christine Day.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first of two change orders that you'll consider tonight. We would have combined them, but we didn't actually think that we were going to have the second one ready in time. This one was time-sensitive, we needed an answer on it because there are chemical skids waiting to be manufactured and sent to us that have some time delays associated with them. The other one, we ended up being able to get ready and in on time, and so that's why you're seeing these in two. You're also not getting a report tonight on the wastewater treatment plant and the brine line. We just had a couple of weeks in between the time that I gave you the last report and the time that we were moving forward with this agenda, and there just wasn't a whole lot to report. However, subsequent to that, last week, we did get some really good news back from SAPA and OCSD. I believe the city manager sent this out, but I think this is noteworthy to report to you guys in public. We received our full approval from OCSD in order to discharge into the brine line. We will have to go through the permitting process, that was a multi-year task that SAPA was a fantastic agency to work with. Rich Haller and David Rule were the two that were our contacts and did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, a lot of legwork, putting together our documents, making sure that we had all the i's dotted, all the t's crossed. But I am happy to announce that we do have approval from OCSD to go through the, to permit to be into the brine line. Again, we're no longer conditionally approved, so it was a good day last Friday. This is the, again, the first of two, this is change order number 12. The first item is the one that had a little bit of a lead time and was a critical item, it's about $1,500. If you'll remember, we changed the chemical that we were, were using in the plant from a pretty caustic to a not-so-caustic, much more stable chemical for the treatment process. In doing that, our, we had planned a much higher concentration than the manufacturer normally was running through the spec pipe that came with that, and so what we are requiring is to upgrade our piping that's associated to be able to run the concentration of chemical that we planned to put through. Running that concentrated chemical gives the staff that flexibility in being able to manage the treatment process, as well as there's some cost savings with running a better concentration of chemical. So we recommend that change, which is item number one, in the amount of about $1,500. The second one is a safety element on the motors that are at the plant. These are what they call thermocouple temperature elements that basically if they don't feel that we have water running through it or that the pump is beginning to run dry, they cut off the pump, and basically what it does is save the pump. So for roughly about $2,400, we can save a $60-plus-thousand-dollar item. And then the last one is one of your owner-initiated change orders, and this was the Solids Handling Building, so if you remember back when we looked at the owner-initiated items, one of them was to go to a bulk storage of chemicals. This allowed us to have a better safety factor with our, our staff dealing with it. In addition to that, we were able to get better pricing because we could buy more chemicals in bulk. With that, we had to do some modifications to the original building that was designed, we had to put in some bigger doors to be able to get the toads in and out, and so this particular change order came back at $87,549. Original estimate was about $75,000, and so we recommend that we approve this to be able to handle those. Total change order is just shy of $92,000, and staff recommends approval of this, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Any public comment? Okay. So discussions, so questions, so comments?
Mayor, I move to approve change order number 12 for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade expansion in the amount not to exceed $91,417.26. I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Bertamlaure?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Item number 15. City Council approval of change order number 13 for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade expansion in the amount not to exceed $400,000, $400,000, $400? Stock report, Ms. Day.
Yes, sir. This is the third of the four owner-initiated change orders, we'll have the, the fourth one coming to you probably in the next couple of months, it's actually associated with phase two of the plant. This is the F1 bulk storage items that have to do with, when we originally designed the plant, we anticipated a certain pH coming into the plant from all of our users in, in basic industrial, commercial, residential. At that time, we didn't plan for adding a pH to come through the RO, and that was in the first bulk chemical storage skid change order that you did. So this is kind of on the tell-in, so now that we have been able to change the pH at the front end, now we have to change it at the, at the back end in order to be able to discharge it, and so that's what this does. In addition to that, we anticipate that we will have some chlorination processes that happen in the plant, you approved that in the first change order. This actually takes us to no chlorination, so for our discharge permit through the regional board, we believe that, that discharge permit will require us to discharge no chlorine into the stream bed. We do have to discharge a minimum of 1.8 per day, so we, yes, per day.
Yes.
I was running that number through my head going, that's a lot. It is a lot, but we do treat a lot. So 1.8 per day is going to have to be declored, and so that's what this change order does. The original estimate, unfortunately, we presented that to you at $175,000. The design engineer can't find where he had it and pulled that number from, that's not the number that his staff gave him, and he was in the 350 ranges from his staff when he presented it to you, the first time that number got messed up. So this change order is actually $404,000. Um, he was in the three-fifty ranges from his staff when he presented it to you the first time. That number got messed up. Um, so, this change order is actually four-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-twenty-one. And, um, we do recommend that we move forward with this. I, I know it's a, it's a large sum of money. However, I think if you look at your project accounting, uh, we can fully afford doing this. It's, it's imperative to the plan. It's going to be imperative to your discharge permit. Um, and had we presented it correctly the first time, uh, you wouldn't be as probably shocked by the number.
Any public comment?
No.
Discussion?
I have a comment. Oh, very good. First of all, it's, uh, no, first and last thing. I mean, I'd like to congratulate you. I know this is a lot of hard work and everything on the approval from, uh, OCSD, and, uh, you know, uh, authorize us to, uh, really, uh, you know, uh, discharge on this. And, uh, one quick question, sir. When do you think, uh, we could die completely the brine line on this?
Uh, we are looking at, we're still waiting on one permit from Army Corps. Um, however, that'll be the last connection that is made, and we're actively working on that with them. The rest of the, the tie-in to the brine line and several of the other connections are really kind of down to the jack and bores and directional drills. Um, we anticipate those to be done probably by, um, April at the latest. Um, and then, we are working on, so we still have to go through some permitting processes. Um, we're permitting with SAPA. We're doing that tie-in to the Inland Empire Brine Line, and then I have, we have to present over to them the asphalt to go with that. In addition to that, we have to have the discharge permit for the new treatment process. Um, we anticipate that we would start up the new plant in two phases. So, we'll start up the MBR portion of the new plant somewhere in April, and then come behind that with, and run the RO. We want to run those as separate processes so that if we have any kinks in either of the processes, we're not chasing two sides. We're really getting one perfected and then adding on the next process, since these are both, you know, fairly new to this treatment plant. But I, I would say latest we would probably be discharging is June, July. We'll be, um, processing Title XXII water at that point as well.
Very good. Thank you so much on your stuff too. I mean, I did a lot of excellent job on that, you know? That's a lot of work on, on that, uh, on that job. Thank you. Yes.
I'd just like to get a, I mean, an increase of over a hundred percent on an estimate is a lot. Are we sure that that's the right number now?
They've gone, yeah.
Can you compare it with something else? I mean, that's, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand, but, you know, a hundred and ninety, two-hundred thousand more.
The engineer actually came back and said his estimate was in the high three-fifties, so we're really only off a, a small amount. He just transcribed that wrong when we put together the information brought before council.
You feel comfortable with that?
I do.
My paranoia doesn't feel comfortable until you tell me that.
The, the construction managers have gone through the pricing, the contractors have gone through the pricing. Uh, we run all of this. They know before they even bring it to me that they better have it nailed down.
I just want everybody to be sure that we're sure.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any motion on this? Oh, one more quick question.
We're still on schedule at waterboard, right? You're happy with our schedule and where we're at?
Uh, we are. So, uh, we went in front of the waterboard and got an extension until September. Uh, again, we anticipate that we will beat that, and we want to beat that because we want to move into the next phase. Uh, we've already submitted for our discharge permit with the new process, so they're on a six-month timeline for that. We actually have a meeting next Tuesday where we're, Beckston and I and the design engineer are going to meet with them.
Great, thank you so much. One more comment, I mean, on, on that, I get so excited on this, you know, because on the face...
That's good, 'cause I know.
You know, because it's, it's real. I mean, we're so small city, that, that's the way they see it, and then we have this, uh, water treatment, uh, plant, you know? And then, uh, you know, the future is so bright on, on our side. The face one, uh, the way I see it is around, uh, May or June of this year, and then our completion will be on, on June next year?
Yeah.
Full operations and everything?
Where we get the contractor completely out of.
Okay, thank you.
May I like to move to approve change order number thirteen for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade expansion in the amount not to exceed four-hundred-four thousand, eight-hundred-twenty-one dollars, thirty-three cents?
All set. Go ahead, Brad. I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number sixteen. Authorize the mayor to make appointments to the various, uh...
Yes.
Boards, commissions, and committees.
If you'd like, I can give an intro to it.
Okay.
Uh, this is an annual reorganization that happens every January. Um, the council is assigned to various boards and committees and commissions. Um, and so, a reorganization happens in January where the mayor appoints each council member to those committees. And each council member has, um, submitted their requests of preference, and those have been given to the mayor.
Very good. How do you want me to, uh, do this, uh, do it line by line?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, gentlemen, lady? Okay, here we go. The conversation now, uh, right now, it's, it shows on my record that Nancy Carroll, the chair, Mike Lara, alternate. Is that okay? Okay. Transit, on the Riverside Transit Agency, Nancy Carroll, representative, Mike Lara, alternate. Is that okay? Okay. Riverside County Transportation Commission, Lloyd White, representative, Ray Santos, alternate. Okay? Okay. Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, Julio Martinez, board member, Mike Lara, alternate. Is that okay? Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks and Recreation District, Mike Lara, license, Ray Santos, alternate. Is that okay? Cherry Valley, Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District, on this is, uh, you know, uh, Julio Martinez, license, Ray Santos, alternate. Is that okay? Beaumont Unified School District, Ray Santos, license, Nancy Carroll, alternate. Still? Legislative, license, Julio Martinez?
That's the mayor, unless you...
Okay. No, I, I'll, I'll take it. Collaborative Agency will be, uh, Lloyd White, representative, Ray Santos, alternative, on this. We're okay? Of course, this, uh, city ma- manager and mayor's, uh, you know, breakfast in here will be Ray Santos and city manager, pardon.
I would like to be the representative. We think for free breakfast.
Okay, next item. Eastern Riverside County Executive Communication Authority, Mrs. Erica, will be Lloyd White and Carrie Mendoza, board member. Is that okay? Southern California Association of Governments, Ray Santos, representative, Julio Martinez, alternative. Alternating on that, you fine?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. League of, uh, California Cities, Ray Santos, boarding delegate, Lloyd White, alternate. Is that okay? Committee to oversee, that will be the Memorial Committee. I haven't really, uh, you know, attended this. Ray Santos, uh, committee member, uh, Julio Martinez, the, uh, actually is a committee member also. San Diego County Regional Focus High Pollution Reduction Task Force, Julio Martinez, representative, Ray Santos, alternate. You okay on that? Okay. Finest Audit Committee, Julio Martinez still, Nancy Carroll. Can we, you want to switch on this?
Um, I would say...
Lloyd White?
No, I'll stay on that, that's fine.
Okay. Economic Development Committee, Ray Santos, committee member, Mike Lara, committee member. Okay. San Diego County Integrated Regional Water Management Region Stakeholder Advisory Committee will be, uh, Ray Santos and Nancy Carroll. You're okay on that, Mike? Okay. Western Riverside Council of Governments, Mike Lara, committee member, alternate, Nancy Carroll. Transit Ad-Hoc Two-by-Two Committee, Ray Santos, committee member, and Nancy Carroll, committee member. Water District Reluse Ad-Hoc Two-by-Two Committee, Ray Santos, member, and Lloyd White, member. Okay, let me turn it down. ASCOM, there'll be Lloyd White, board member, Mike Lara, alternate. I think that's about it, uh... We're okay. Good, thank you so much. Okay. Item number seventeen. Legislative Updates and Discussion. Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor Santos, rest of the council. Hope you enjoyed your holidays and New Year and your reprieve from the California State Legislature, because they're back in session yesterday. So, we haven't got an official report on what they're up to from Townsend Public Affairs yet, but, um, I hope to get something to you by the next meeting. And if not, we'll get a full January update at the first meeting in February. So, if anyone has any questions, I can try to answer those, but we don't, really don't have too much of a, an update tonight because they're right on session. Thank you.
Kyle, just, I understand that there's a lot of housing stuff coming our way, so just keep us updated on that, please.
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Council reports. Who wants to start, Doc?
I'll start.
You start? Okay.
I have nothing to report.
Nancy?
I will not go to great lengths to describe what happened yesterday at the Finance Audit Committee meeting because our esteemed treasurer has his report ready. And last time, I got accused of encroaching on some of his highlights, so I definitely won't do that tonight. Um, I do want to mention that the Vets Expo is having their event at City Hall on the twenty-fifth from ten o'clock to one o'clock. Uh, there is also a blood drive that is happening at the same time. Uh, so, I want to encourage everyone here to attend the expo, support it, do whatever you can to encourage any veterans or families of veterans who want to know about resources and benefits to, um, attend. There will be some medals, I believe, that are going to be awarded during that ceremony, uh, which is always absolutely delightful to see that done, so, um, I look forward to that. I also want you to please spread the word, if you would, with your neighbors in the community, also about the blood drive, uh, that will be happening at the same time. And, um, with that, I will pass it on. So, thank you very much. I hope everybody had a great holiday.
You and I?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, just a friendly reminder that tomorrow is the Economic Development Committee meeting, starting off in January. Um, also, I just want to compliment, um, Chief Taliesin and your team. Um, I forget the date, but it was over the, the Christmas holiday. There was an abandoned RV, um, making a lot, um, southwest corner of Sixth and Pennsylvania. Um, it popped up. I saw there was a vehicle, police vehicle there, using information, and a couple of days later, it was gone. So, thank you very much for your, thank your team for staying on top of that and getting that out of there so quickly. That's all I have, man.
Very good. What about...
The only thing I need to say right now is congratulations to Elizabeth and Lily. It was an awesome Christmas parade. Uh, we had a great turnout from both the participants and the, um, community, and I've got a lot of feedback positive, so I look forward to next year. So, congratulations for that, great job, and that's all I can do.
Very good.
Mayor, could I add one to that? Tell life, I forgot. I'm sorry, I apologize. Um, this Thursday at eleven o'clock at the Women's Club, uh, they are, the Women's Club is honoring women veterans. So, if you would like to attend, um, I know that they would welcome anyone who would like to come and see the, um, the event and hear a little bit about the stories of women in the military. So, I apologize for not including. Go ahead.
Excuse me, that's Thursday, is that what you said?
Thursday.
It's at the Women's Club this Thursday, the ninth, at eleven o'clock.
Is that the same time as the City of Beaumont?
See this, oh, luncheon? Luncheon.
It's still announcement.
What's that?
Okay, now, let me, uh, on my side, is this, this one here is the, uh, you know, I attended that this, uh, last, last Sunday, the, uh, birthday of a hundred-year birthday of Ruth Parker. We presented her a, uh, a recognition, certificate of recognition on, on, uh, on being a longtime resident here in Beaumont, and, uh, that, uh, held in our first assembly of God in, in Beaumont. And also, let me, I, you know, take this time also to, uh, you know, uh, this year will be, uh, you know, it's a fun ride with you guys, you know, the council and the staff for, for the advancement and, and good of the City of Beaumont. I'm looking forward on this. I mean, I, you know, especially the hard work of the staff in here. I mean, I, you know, I've seen that. I mean, I've been here for almost three years now, and, uh, I know we will encounter the ups and downs, complaints, but we will deal with it with smile and positive attitude. And I know, uh, you know, the, the citizens in here will understand us, and, uh, you know, we, we have a hard time of past few years. And, um, I know everybody is looking for a cleaner, safer, uh, safe area and healthier and well-educated, uh, you know, uh, citizen in, in Beaumont. And that's the way I see it. I mean, I, you know, well, that's why, uh, I'm more on the healthcare education and, uh, you know, for the sake of the, uh, from, from, uh, from the kids to the seniors. I like to take this opportunity. And then, I'd like to, uh, you know, request on, on, I've, I've been driving around and, and, uh, seen the, uh, you know, if we could have this program, uh, say something, say something. I mean, uh, we could really bold that. I mean, I know it's, it's so nice, our sign, and it's all really, uh, you know, the font. If we could chase the font on that, I mean, uh, so we could recognize or see it and get more information on, on the, uh, on, on the, uh, you know, who will be the, uh, direct contact at that. I really appreciate that. And then, lastly, I would like to, uh, you know, uh, to probably, uh, you know, tell you that, uh, this is the first one that, uh, we will launch on, on, on the city with the full, full coordination with the staff, and especially on, on the Chamber of Commerce on here. I'd like to, uh, you know, uh, to do the mayor's roundtable. And, uh, you know, and, uh, what's the roundtable? I mean, uh, there will be, uh, my invitations, and there will be the, uh, you know, the, uh, most of the corporations that, uh, we have in here is the, uh, you know, uh, the one that's coming is the, um, uh, the Amazon. We'd like to invite them. And, uh, there will be a four or five big corporations that, uh, really is in our, in our city. And then I would like to be, you know, invite also the one on the, all the way down, who have a business at home. And we want them to be part of this, you know, roundtable, our city roundtable. And why I'm doing this, because I like to reach out in there directly to them. And then there will be a lot of, you know, city staff that will join us, you know, so we could understand what's really going on, on the industry out there. I like to reach out on that. So there will be on February twenty, twenty-eighth, and, you know, we'll coordinate with the city manager in here, all the programs and the, we're on the planning stage on this, but we're definite on the date and time on this. There will be around eleven-thirty up to one-thirty. And hopefully we will provide lunch on this. So, that's all I have. And again, thank you so much, all the staff of the city. Let's move on on the economic development update. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the Mayor Pro Tem alluded to, the next Economic Development Committee meeting is tomorrow, here in this room at four o'clock.
Okay.
So hopefully everyone can attend or watch us on YouTube.
Okay.
One thing I did want to talk about, since it's a new year is a new program that was derived somewhat from the Economic Development Committee between the City of Beaumont and Mount San Jacinto Community College. And that is going to be our monthly career readiness events. And what we're going to be doing is inviting their career vehicle out to Beaumont City Hall once a month for workforce development. So if you know anyone that's trying to enter the workforce or may have been displaced from the workforce and needs to go through interview training, do some mock interviews, expirate their resume, update their LinkedIn, and there's going to be a slew of other trainings that the Community College professionals can provide. Those are going to be here. We've kicked off this event for the first time, and we want to hold it monthly on the same day of the month every single time, so that way if someone unfortunately misses that wanted to attend, they know the thing will be back with that same level of service the next month. So with that said, January didn't work out for the same day, so the January twenty-third is going to be the first day it's a Thursday. And then every other month after that, we're always going to hit the second Thursday of the month, and it's around nine o'clock to one. So people can come in the morning, or they can come at lunchtime or a little bit after lunch. So if anyone has any questions, the conference has happened. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, city attorney report.
I don't know, I have a lot here, maybe we need to take a break. You know, it's over a year since we had met on the media. Anyway, I think I didn't say that. You will see a budget adjustment.
I think it's on target. We reviewed the numbers last night with the city manager, but there will be some adjustments that we'll see in February that will be reported to you. Next were our council assignments, the idea and update on the six tasks that were assigned by the council. One was the CFD training for the realtors. And we are at a point right now where our next step is to get with some realtors at a formal meeting that's going to be conducted over the holidays. So they're looking sometime in mid-January to do that. Assist with RFPs is a project, and we decided that the first one we would work on is regarding the auditors that will be putting out an RFP for next year. But we need to wait till the process is done before we go in and put an RFP together, let this crew finish up their job initially. Investment policies. We have looked, I should say the finance director, looked and reviewed the council's policies on investments. And we don't believe we need to make any changes to be able to go out and make some recommendations for other types of investments for you. So that was one of our objectives, was to review the policy and see if we need to make changes. And we went outside of the beliefs that we have right now, but that's not a problem. And we will be looking and scheduling some meetings with some financial people to talk about different investment opportunities. City IT security, we're asked to have some extra eyes on that and look at what's up. We have to have a formal presentation in February that gives a little bit of time for the new person in IT to come in and be able to develop a presentation, so that's a February date. Grant reporting, and the last item, which was financial training, they're more on hold. The only thing we did clarify in the grant reporting is we do recognize that the city is doing a lot right now with grants. There is help from our one agency that supplies us with information on that. What we're going to look at is for maybe other existing opportunities outside of that scope that we could recommend and find some money for the city. Last is the audit report, and we are on target. Right, Jeff? We're on target. He's been working on it over the holidays, getting the written part together, the draft. There's three steps that we see in getting it to you. We have not created, we have a subcommittee already involved in our auditing, reviewing our auditing process that we've had in the past to make sure that we are doing the things that we said we fixed. That committee is going to work with inside people and go over, meet with the auditors and go over the report. Then it'll be presented to the Finance and Audit Committee in February the eighth, February eighteenth it'll come to the council.
Okay.
Okay? And that's my report.
Prop. three.
Finance Committee, Prop. three. We may be changing that date because I got pushed to maybe move that date a little bit. But we'll, fine, it'll be the third or the eighth.
Very good. Let me, you know, comment on this, I mean, just to interject on this. I mean, I'll be speaking on the ninth on the board of realtors in here, and me and the city manager, that, you know, I will interject and then invite them on that CFD issue. And then, you know, we could, you know, grab probably two or three people in there to join us, join you, and talk about the CFD. So that's what we're going to do on that side. And then also on the tenth, that will be Friday, I will be on the Redlands, you know, I mean, country club with the board of realtors too. I mean, being a mayor, I was invited a realtor also. So I will, I will, you know, ask them to assign somebody on that CFD education.
And keep working on that, that's their next step.
Yes, thank you. Okay, city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. During the month of November, we received and completed seventy-six public records requests. Staff time was approximately thirty-four hours. In addition to staff time, we had additional costs for legal billing of one thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Happy New Year to all.
Very good, happy new year. City attorney report.
The update on litigation is included in the packet. Other than that, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. City manager report.
Well, hi. There you go.
No more football.
No. Oh, there's always football. Don't you worry. Week one, thank you.
Come on.
Oh, okay.
Looks like Santa Claus left a little something extra here. And so this is always kind of an exciting yet sad little ceremony that we do, but we do have outgoing mayor, Julio Martinez. Mayor Martinez, you really were in charge of the city during a very critical time. If you kind of look back and think about all the things we accomplished, we got ramped up our first state management program. We got our sewer plant up and going. We made a lot of inroads with our local agencies and our neighbors. We had, I got our fire station moving. Yeah, there's so many critical things that you oversaw this process. I will say though, that you didn't get as many phone calls for change orders as Ms. Carroll did when she was there. I think we kind of worked her out with that process. I did check the stats, and it appears that you were selected as the best number-one mayor in Beaumont for 2019. So congratulations. If you'll come around, I'd like to present you with this. It's not a hammer, okay? This is not a hammer. So I know you're putting things together at home, so.
I thought you were.
But you may need it for that. But this is your honorary gavel. And again, we just want to tell you how much we appreciate your effort and everything you made to us this session.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Great job. Great job.
Very, I appreciate it. Thank you. Remember forty-five minutes of each other.
That was, that was a great city.
No pressure.
Well, I was asked to convey one thing by the city attorney. He asked me to tell this joke. You know what the difference between, you know what the difference between a city attorney and a heart of buffalo is? The attorney charges more. Just kidding, kind of. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Couldn't you have cut the mic on that one?
Mayor, I'd like to speak to the future agenda item.
Oh, yes.
Future. I think because it is such an important issue, and a lot of people seem to be getting misinformed and not up to date, and I think that's our fault. I think we should do a educational workshop, agenda item, whatever you want to call it, on our status of our fire department.
Okay.
Oh, so you're asking for a workshop to update the public, or?
Well, I think everything that city manager put out today, I think we need an option for people to be educated on where we're at. And also, you know, I think people want to come in and let us know how it's impacting them. So I just think it would be more of a, a public.
Public information.
I think in addition to that, though, I think you should also, because the public needs to be aware that a lot of the issue is with the insurance commissioner of the state as well.
Well, I was going to suggest we have someone come in and speak about the fire.
And I know, it's, you know, it's typical for the city government to hear, you know, our issues, and they're very valid. But there are a lot of that where it's a state commissioner thing. And, you know, I think we should try to get state people down here as well, you know, maybe Morrell can come up or something where we can see what are they doing. Because, you know, we can do so much by build a fire station, but a lot of these insurance companies, they're dropping people, you know, with poor reasoning, you know.
Well, we can go into this more in the, in the workshop.
Yeah, and I know that, I don't know.
Could I make a suggestion?
Because we have so much going on also.
It seems like it would be better maybe for an agenda item, where we go full-blown on the agenda with the presentation expectation, how we've allocated budget, current status. So, and we can answer questions of the public, and we can put out the word with the workshop.
I, let me correct, I didn't mean a workshop.
Okay, sure.
It was an agenda item, it was sort of informational.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a full-blown workshop. I'm just talking about the ability to get the information out and to let the public comment on it.
I agree totally.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Thank you for clarifying.
If I may. If I can ask the structure on that, would you like that at the beginning of the agenda, under the presentation component, so we can do a full-blown, feel any questions?
And if it's possible to get a local insurance agent, someone who can speak to it, I think would be helpful as well. Because I understand that this is, this is a state issue, but if we had that fire station built, it would not be an issue.
Well.
It would not be. There are other state issues, I'm just saying, we need to let people know that, because it has been a huge high priority of ours for, at least for me and mine, for five years. I mean, it's the first thing we went into. So it's not something we can do overnight, and I think the public needs to understand that we are doing what we can.
Sure.
And where we are, what the status is.
Very good. You want to add, John? Okay. Are you going to ask? You're okay on that? Okay, very good. So we will do an adjournment during the city council meeting on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty, at seven forty-eight PM. Thank you. Welcome to the end of one.